You ready? All right. I will call the regular meeting of the city at Dunsmere City Council on August 3, 2023, at approximately 6:02 PM. We will stand for the flag salute, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll move into item number two, which is our roll call for meeting.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present. All right, we will move into our first item tonight, which is a special presentation by our town historian, a little update for us, so if you'd like to approach the podium, and please use the microphone we've provided, so that everyone on Zoom can hear you. And hopefully that's
Just a little quiet, but you're Thank you for the pleasure to hear this. I would like to ask you to use your imagination a little bit to kind of help me in my presentation. If you would think with me of the north Dunsmere freeway exit, I thought it was not the central one, but the road. If you got that in your mind, then think of the north side of that heading towards Mount Chepstow, and think of the six lanes freeway traffic, front end. Try to imagine what that looked like in about 1888, 1889. Dunsmere was just, it looks like more freeway, there's no roadway. Gently sloping landfill there, all the bloodstream that flows from the east side, now across goes now to the freeway. And at that time, there was a berry farm there. I don't know what it was about berry farming, but it was quite a, quite a kind of a lot of berry farms. And you think of Berryville, Mount Chepstow, and there are places down the canyon where people were raising strawberries, raspberries, all kinds of berries. The berry farm was being operated by a family whose name was Hedge. Think about that for a minute. The Springfield Creek that flowed across there was an area called Hedge Creek, floating into the Hedge Berry Farm. That little creek flowed all the way across after watering the plants, flowed down into the little six million forested canyon, and I'm sure most of you have been to, swarmed by volcanic activity. It's the edge of a lava flow that was swarming the front of it, and the water flow that shaped the canyon. Freezing flowing water caused the big salt rock to fracture into columns of stone that would very aggressively look like building blocks, amazing thing to see. The local Native Americans and their old settlers, since they're in need of that spot, they knew that it was a tranquil, peaceful place to go, cool place to go on a hot summer day, a dramatic place to go in America, and it was one of those breathtaking. In 1890s, the first trail down into the canyon, a few waterfalls, built by Chinese railroad workers. I thought this kind of interesting, interesting factoid. I'll go back about 50 years to the 1850s. Ross McLeod, no rich relationship, was the owner of the Upper Sodas Springs Resort, which is what we call County Park today. In 1850s, Ross helped to build a toll road from Dunsmere to Lyric. That toll road would have been used by coaches and freight wagons, travelers from the canyon head north and south. That road went right along the side of the berry farm. Early 1900s, automobile was coming along, so all of a sudden there were standing trucks and trucks, not a lot of them that were going along. In 1912, that road, that toll road, became a part of State Highway 99. Automobile traffic increased dramatically. In 1926, it was absorbed into the US highway system, designated US Highway 99. In 18, I'm sorry, 1958, construction of the interment, the interstate started. Flowing of interstate, the berry farm is ruined, it was gone. But the creek is still there, it's still called Hill Creek. Still flowed all the way across to the canyon, and the waterfall was still on. Edge Creek waterfall was there and still there. At that time, the toll road was here. Local people knew about it, two minutes credit from the road. In 1972, this is where the drama, this whole thing starts. In 1972, the state announced plans to widen the interstate to six lanes, and to go the frontage road. And this was quite an ambitious plan, because it required a lot of cuts and fills, a lot of earth moved, a lot of debris, asphalt, gravel, dirt, it had to be disposed of. Problem, what do you do about that? Well, the simple solution, stop at the canyon. Fill up the canyon up, flow the waterfall wherever you can spare it. Well, at that time, there are two sisters who owned that property. Their names were Marie Reed and Margaret Brennan. And they were shocked that such a thing could even be considered. And so they did a very dramatic thing, they mobilized the awesome forces of the Garden Club. And the Garden Club was shocked. And the members of the Garden Club went door to door in town with their petitions, collected hundreds of signatures, presented them to the city council in this great room, to a standing room, holding proud, the whole town was here demanding action. The council planned to manifest proper, which is sent to the state highway department, and they developed an urgent, urging that the plan should change, which they did. And also question here, which was officials came to look at the situation, they had to fall, and they were surprised, they promised to do this. Well, listen, you got to promise. And there was a lot of tension during that time of what's going to happen. They would save the waterfall. Finally, after months of waiting, the word came that yes, they were going to change the plans. The plan would relocate, the new plan would relocate the frontage road to bypass the falls top of the falls where we go around it now. Cost of that was over a million dollars in 1972. If you convert that to today's dollars, it's about $700,000. So it's a pretty dramatic thing. So thanks to Marie Reed and Margaret Brennan, we still have the creek waterfall. And there are two results of their efforts. Number one, the waterfall was saved, it stood out. Number two, it's kind of a highlight statement, the guide north on Dunsmere Avenue, it becomes a weird intersection, where there's a frontage road, there's a freeway entrance, a freeway exit, government system through Avenue, they all converge in that great small river, thanks to Marie Reed and Margaret Brennan. So the program that will came, has to preserve the waterfall, and we can be thankful to those sisters.
So when you're driving by, give, I'm sorry. This new piece of equipment here, take me down, would you? So when you're driving by, I guess we should appreciate what they did. It can be a new thing to say thank you as we drive through that spot.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you so much for that this evening. I know one of the things that the council has discussed in the past is having you participate more with us and share that history. And then we do have an upcoming future agenda item on revitalizing the historic district commission. So that is not on our agenda tonight, but it is something that's been requested for the future. So we'll be putting that together and letting you know when that happens. All right, thank you. We'll now open into our general public comment of the evening. This is the time to make comments to the city council on items that are not on the agenda, comments on our special presentation tonight, or comments on our consent agenda, which is just one item, which is our check register for July 15 through July 28 of 2023. So if you'd like to come up and make a three-minute comment on an item not on the agenda, the special presentation or consent, you may do so now. We have sent you speaking to the microphone, so that those on Zoom may hear you, and you are recorded. Go ahead.
Okay, is the mic picking this up?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, you don't have to say it every now and
Yeah, yeah, I think you will have to.
Hi, my name is David Hicks, I live right up the street, two blocks. I was very happy to discover, as I came here tonight with something to share with all of you, that other people are thinking along ironic lines with this. So I just want to back up for a second and say that one of the factors that caused me to move to Dunsmere and invest the last 14 years of my life, and 19 years of owning property here, was that I was walking to work one day, and that all my life I've tried to shorten my commute, tried to have boring mile commutes, and girls outside that, and then were considered undesirable. You know, tried to date close to home, and get close to home, and ultimately, to walk to work was like a big deal. And I ended up being able to walk to work from my 14 floor condo, under the freeway, Interstate 80, and out on the water in Emeryville, to my office with this pinnertime through the bay. Well, as I was crossing the street one day, in the green pedestrian lane, a woman ran into me with her car. And just before she ran into me, I jumped up and landed on the hood. And then she flipped me a double eagle, both hands. And I went home and told my partner that people are getting crazy. And I wasn't mad, I was like, I felt sad, because people were under so much stress to put their kids in private school, and have two incomes, and buy a house, a million-dollar house, and over five years earlier, it was only $40,000, you know, that kind of thing. But that was one of the reasons that I came. So I wanted to just mention that now I've been bothered by a few crazy people driving up this street at 40, 50 miles an hour, Dunsmere Avenue, coming and going. And most people are really nice, and they stop like 30, 40 feet back for pedestrians. I've never seen that in the Bay Area before, I don't care. I like that a lot. So I discovered that California enacted Section 22358.9 about a year and a half ago, and it allows the city, without any further ado, if it meets the requirements, which it does, to lower the speed limit in the historic district to 20 miles an hour. And I would like to see that done, because of the speeders, and in the past, I've mentioned with various city managers that I would like to see some speed bumps in town, because they don't bother fire trucks, contrary to urban myth. Fire trucks go right over speed bumps. So elevated, how much, do I have any time left?
And you can, you can wrap it up, yeah, one or two sentences, we got
Okay. So I'm asking that, I've already given our city manager a copy of that code section, with permission, I'll hand a copy to the mayor. And just ask to be part of the consideration on the upcoming stuff that we're going to do in the historic district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments, items not on the agenda, or about our special presentation night or consent?
Hello? Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. Allison Lyszewski, 5334, River Avenue.
Just a second, gentlemen, gentlemen, if you could, just because it echoes in here. Go ahead.
Thank you. I really appreciate our town historian. I thought that was awesome. You know, one of, one of my takeaways from it is the power of collective action that we can have, particularly in a small town, and the power of community involvement. So I too celebrate those systems that created that change. Oftentimes, when we create change, it's bigger than ourselves, and it outlasts ourselves. So I appreciate those sisters that came before me. On another note, I support the rejuvenation of the downtown area, as many people in here do, and I also support the vacant distressed ordinances. That being said, I'm curious as to why the city hall has had a piece of plywood on it for the last two months, where a window should be. What's up with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison.
I think I cut it down, Peter, by mistake.
There you go.
5859, where do I live? Sacramento Avenue, in the city of Dunsmere. I follow in lockstep with Allison and Ron McLeod. I'm very disappointed, when you look at this agenda and the future agenda items, there's nothing dealing with the revitalization of the historic district. And I thought I could count at least four supportive votes for starting on that process with the notion, the city seems to have a sense that the buildings will wait. The most historic buildings of the downtown district will wait until the city's ready to do something to try to save them. And as someone who's spent millions of dollars restoring buildings in downtown Dunsmere, my message is, they won't wait. So any strategy that you adopt will center on the historic district for economic revitalization. And the longer you wait, the heavier the lift will be. You will turn off private investors, you will turn off government funders, it just makes it that much harder. So please put on your future agenda items, appointing the committee that Ron McLeod recommended almost 10 years ago, with his observation, the historic district has suffered, the current arrangement with two members of the planning commission that have no authority whatsoever. How much longer are you going to wait? It's fine to have consultants, and often a consultant is described as somebody that will look at your watch and tell you what time it is. We know, as local people, what the city needs. The merchants know it, the residents know it. Let's appoint a five-member committee. I have commissioned two studies for the historic district, both done by smart women that live here. And one proposes a district type of format with taxing power and the ability to go after grown loans and grants. The other is a marketing strategy that I know the chamber is trying to do something about, but it really is not the sort of boldness and immediacy that we need to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on items that are not on the agenda in relation to our special presentation or checkers?
Hello, Stephen Bryan, Ciskew Community Resource Collaborative, and Dunsmere Community Resource Center. I just wanted to talk briefly about a couple of events going on. One of them is extreme heat, and the other one is water conservation. We got a lot of wet snow this winter, but as we know, that's not going to last forever in our lakes and rivers, and just want people to be more conscious about saving our water, protecting our resources, and protecting our neighbors and family members from extreme heat. I brought some information here, a couple things, cooling centers throughout the county, the locations and times, and then also information, you could go to links on the website to get more information on how to protect yourself, your kids, your neighbors, your grandparents, from extreme heat. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, if you are on Zoom, you can go to the reactions tab at the bottom tool R and hit raise your hand, and you may also make a comment tonight for three minutes on an item not on the agenda for this item. Right? Seeing none, we'll close. Item number four, move into council and staff comments, and I will go over to city manager.
So to kind of dovetail on Peter's comment, so we did meet with Cosmont this week to discuss the downtown revitalization project. We had an excellent showing of, I don't know, we had to add chairs in here yesterday in order to get the people in for the stakeholders engagement process. Councilmember Deutsch and councilmember Bryan, both were in attendance of that, and I thought there was excellent feedback related to downtown. And that's been the core of our focus here just recently.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll move into councilmember comments, and we'll start over with councilmember Chris.
The first thing is, to answer just a little thing to Mr. Hicks, speed bumps and snowplows don't work. We have a lot of snowplows, we look to this town, speed bumps just isn't an option. I would like everybody to take advantage of the information that Stephen Bryan brought. He left the papers on the table here, I'm sure they'll be available at the resource center, maybe downtown city hall, about the cooling centers and what to do to protect your family. It's fire time, so there's a lot of things that come into play here. You need to have your to-go bag, get ready, you need to clear around your house, get that freeze zone, even all the way down to your dryer vent. These are things that can cause fires on a hot day for stupid reasons. I just wish everybody to be safe. I love this town. And on the other note, Brew Fest is Saturday, please come out and join us, it's Saturday time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to expand upon what the city manager brought up. I was here yesterday with Cosmont, and was able to sit here with the two players that came in, one of them from Oregon, and the other one from down in Los Angeles. And I was able to ask the first question, which was, why would you want to work with a small city like ours? You know, the whole idea is, we don't have a whole lot of money, and we probably have a unique challenge. But they said that they felt really comfortable, that there was a lot here that could be done. They had studied and looked at the analysis. I had seen it before, this place, Array I, which you're probably familiar with, gives you a sense of who's coming where, when. Apparently, your cell phone, whether you're aware of it or not, feeds into artificial intelligence, they can tell how many people come from where, and how long they stay here in the city. And they've already looked into that. The biggest thing that I think is encouraging about this, this effort right now that's underway, and I have to give credit to the city manager, because he's been kind of sowing the seeds for this with the business community by having, this is a second roundtable, we brought them together. And because of that energy tied together with the chamber and the leadership there, we actually had a very, very good turnout. And probably another 10 or so more than the people sitting in this room right now. So, and it was full of energy, people were sharing and giving their thoughts, and talking about the strengths, the challenges. And that's just the beginning of that process. And so I do believe that we're on the verge of doing something significant about bringing in new businesses, finding out what businesses are available. The one thing that I was really struck by was, as we were talking, just the idea that when we talk about economic development, we really have to kind of look at it at two levels. An economy that works for the people who live here, which is basically a lot of poor people and senior citizens, and then the economy for the people who we bring in, which probably has a whole lot of money to spend. But both of those are important, and as one business owner pointed out, if you plan for the winter, to have something that'll take you through the winter, you can survive it. And so that's part of the overall strategy. The final thing I will say is something that I brought up right away, and I'm still have, I'm surprised that nobody has said, hey, let's do this. We would like to pride ourselves in being a trail town. We have Pacific Crest Trail coming in at Castella, and the bus line picks them up now and brings them to Dunsmere. And if we had some sort of process, some building like they have, where the people can get a shower, and have things delivered for them ahead of time, this could be a prime stop for those people. As it is right now, they come to Dunsmere from the bus, and then they wait for the next bus to get out of here. So it's really something that I'm encouraging, if there's any entrepreneur out there that would like to take this on, starting a business like that would probably benefit the whole city. It would bring people that otherwise would leave here to walk around, spend money, and make the city better. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryan.
Yes, thank you. I was also meeting with Cosmont yesterday. It's actually very impressive to talk with the gentleman, one has a retail background, has been doing it for 25-plus years, and talked a lot about the need to integrate new technology into the way we do retail, but also have an existing brick and mortar aspect to it. So incredibly knowledgeable, and I look forward to him having conversations with dozens of his contacts. And he was explaining to me that I'm going to be first challenged to get the meeting, I'm going to get meetings. When I get there, I have to be able to sell Dunsmere, and be realistic for the realities, but show the opportunities that exist here. So I think it's amazing, because staff often knows everything about Dunsmere, and could explain that, maybe council members could, maybe citizens could, but we're not necessarily the people who know how to get those meetings. So it's going to be really good. I told everyone who showed up yesterday, I'm very appreciative of the 30-plus members that came on a Wednesday afternoon, that, you know, often I hear people who want to say things to council, or have ideas, but they don't know if it'll really have an impact, what's the point of saying it? If you guys stick with this process and continue to bring input, if you weren't there, I encourage you to come to the next one, there will be many. This is a chance, as far as downtown revitalization goes, along with the active transportation grant that's in place, to really have an impact by just stating your ideas and inputs. So I look forward to being involved with that going forward. Finance committee met, I'm sure that'll be dealt with later. I look forward to seeing everyone here at Brew Fest. And no one said it so far, I was kind of surprised, but maybe I should wait for the mayors.
I just remembered, don't do it.
I want to congratulate the mayor and our city staff for successfully getting the OES grant, which will fund a position for five years, I understand it, for disaster preparedness. What's the overall dollar amount?
It's $965,573.
Awesome, guys.
Thank you, guys.
We played it.
All right, but the
Big thing on my list right now is Brew Fest, obviously. It's going to be a great event this year, we've got two great bands, a whole bunch of food vendors, a whole bunch of craft vendors, a whole bunch of breweries. The only thing we need now is a whole bunch of people to show up on Saturday. So tell everyone you know to come to the Brew Fest on Saturday from 4 to 9 at the baseball field. And then also, I just want to kind of touch on one thing multiple people have mentioned here, and that's the active transportation plan questionnaire, which is all available on the city's website. If you haven't filled it out yet, go fill it out already, I believe the 6th is the last day to fill it out.
Yes, August 13th.
Oh, the 13th?
August 13th.
We extended it to 13th.
Okay.
Okay, August 13th. So that's a really good time to talk about any of these transportation-related issues that are in town, because it opens us up for grant funding as well.
All right, yeah, you didn't bring that up. I just realized that when we were talking about stuff. Yeah, that's exciting. Yeah, the purpose of the Cal OES jumpstart cycle, two plan, is to hire a full-time individual who will focus on just hazard mitigation and disaster planning. And they are eligible to apply for grants on our behalf, that's actually part of the program, is that Cal OES at the state level, which stands for the Office of Emergency Services, wants us to apply for more grants. And so that is part of this whole process, so we will be applying that position here. It's a very well-paid position. The other thing, too, I wanted to bring up again, yes, please participate in the active transportation survey, that goes into creating an active transportation plan, that makes us eligible for specific dollars that we otherwise are not eligible for, that can us eligible for specific dollars that we otherwise are not eligible for, that can pay for anything that is non-singular motorized vehicle travel. So again, thank trails, walking sidewalks, all that, fun stuff, bikes, scooters, and so please participate in that, the reduced speed thing is great, please put that in there. Outside of that, we do have an upcoming joint parks meeting, I believe next Thursday, the 10th.
No, Wednesday, the 9th.
Wednesday, the 9th, sorry.
At 6:00.
At the community center.
Yes, and so we'll be at the community center for that one, we hope everyone can come join us. That's going to be more about the stakeholder engagement that we had talked about in terms of the agenda format, as well as getting some data around events that are in the parks facilities. The other two is, this weekend is the Pacific Crest Music Festival, so there are two concerts, and one will be, I believe, at Pops, and then there's another one at the Nema, that is church and...
Seven-day events.
Seven-day events.
And at Pops, it's at 7:00.
On Saturday.
And if I like that, at the Rotary meeting, the kids gave a little demonstration, and oh my God, you gotta go see it.
Yeah, so if you have some time this weekend outside of Brew Fest, also there's the Pacific Crest Trail Music Festival, I hope that you join for that, otherwise I just have one million to report on, maybe get to number six, but I, anything else for...
Both of these brought up something I wanted to point out. One of my most exciting things about this Saturday is a chance to see my favorite local band, Secret Society Handshake, and to listen to our finance director, Toot That Horn, right? So everyone come there, Secret Society Handshake.
Thank you.
Been a long time.
All right, seeing no other comments, we'll go to committee reports. Would you like to report on the finance committee, or is that more encompassed in the item later in the agenda?
Everything we really have to talk about, which is whenever finance committee will be discussed on the agenda later.
Okay. And then in terms of other committees, I attended the Joint Powers Authority for Solid Waste for Chiswick County last week, it was riveting. No, actually, it was really great, there are two new staff members who are at the county who will be handling the solid waste programming for the county. A lot of what we talked about was an update on Senate Bill 1383, which is the methane gas, also known as the composting bill for the state of California that will kick effect in 2026. On that topic, the Cal OES position will also be working on that program, and for us, once we have that person off the board, helping us with green waste pickup, that will occur similar to your trash pickup, so that's what SB 1383 requires by 2026, that will be curbside green waste and composting pickup, so that will be all part of working on those programs. In addition to the SB 1383 update, we discussed the bylaws of the committee and the priorities of the different cities that attended that meeting, and we should be having another one, I believe, in September. They meet pretty much quarterly, except for they meet in November, so December due to holidays. So any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move into approval of the minutes. Our minutes are for the regular meeting on July 20th, 2023. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion to approve the motion.
No motion by councilmember Kaiser, is our second?
Well, second.
And second by councilmember Claireno. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Moving to the consent agenda, we just have the check register for July 15th through July 28th, 2023. Is there any discussion?
Make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion by councilmember Kaiser to adopt.
Second.
Second by councilmember Deutsch. All those in favor, or did you have a comment?
I just had a basic question on Craigview Water Consolidation, 88,751, since I didn't sign the check specifically, if you could just explain what that is.
So Craigview Water Consolidation is a planning grant component that we had applied for, and so that is part of that planning grant, so we received the funds and then...
Got it, I figured it's not.
And likely some of the debt, that's basis entire, base entire check.
So that's pace for multiple grants?
Yeah, multiple different projects, but...
Craigview Water System.
That probably was just happened to be the first one in the...
The sewer contract.
Okay.
Tank, the tank project.
Okay, so that's the current planning fees based on the grants, no match grants we've had for the most part, or is there, I guess my question would be, are there any building site plans tied to that? So if someone were to look at that number...
Yeah, that's probably in there, too.
So it's just everything for base? Okay.
The entire base, yeah, the entire base invoice.
Okay.
They do parcel it out on their invoices, so if you do want a copy of it.
I can get that later, thank you.
Yep, great. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. We'll now move into our public hearing for the evening, which is the community comments regarding possible community development block grant programming under the 2023 NOPA, Notice of Funding Availability. I will preface this before we start the item, we did receive news that the CDBG program will be pushing back their program to January of 2024, so we will most likely have another public hearing closer to January because part of the rules have changed in terms of what we can use the funding for, but we will still have the public hearing tonight to solicit ideas from the community on possible use of those CDBG funds, and I will now hand it over to city manager.
All right, thank you for the additional summary. So the CDBG application process is a first-come, first-serve process, we can apply for up to $1.5 million. With the changes that Mary Lucchese has pointed out, we were originally going to go specifically after code enforcement for 3/4 of a million dollars, but now we're going to have to expand that to include a housing rehabilitation component, and so when that, when we get closer to that, we will probably, we'll have more information, but as of right now, we have to do a public comment period or a public comment option to provide any input or ask for any input from the community to make sure that we get that before we apply.
Question? So how would you explain to a public member what are the range of things that we're talking about here? What can this grant cover and what would be good ideas that you want them to come up with?
Yeah, so, so really their focus, so this is administered by HCD, so Housing, whatever it stands for, Housing California.
And Community Development.
Community Development, there we go. All right, and so their, their big focus now is housing, right? And so they want to make sure that we're getting housing units back into production that are, you know, fall and disrepair, that's where the code enforcement component comes in. There's also, you know, we have the low-income component where we can do the housing rehabilitation aspects of that, and, and, yeah, and they're, all of that stuff can be included in that. I don't know if it's veteran-specific, but it's definitely income-specific, or you can, we can set those ranges, and so I've done multiple programs like this before, this is a little bit more expanded on what we can do, but our core focus is, you know, making sure we're getting housing units back, back up to usable and, and, or even improve from what they are, and make sure they last for a long time. Thank you.
Yeah, just to go over a quick summary, so you can go for housing projects, public improvements, which include water, wastewater systems, rural utilities like gas and electric services, community facilities, including daycare, domestic violence shelters, food banks, community centers, medical and dental facilities, fire stations, public services, including staffing, operation costs for community facilities, and then planning and technical assistance dollars. There is an EDBG portion of it, which we're currently using to fund the revitalization planning that we're doing. So it encompasses a lot of different things, there are nuances to each one, but those are generally areas that we're...
Question, so House of Glass, is there any way of pulling something in here to turn that into affordable places for people to live?
It could be a...
Potentially, yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my...
Are there any other questions before we open up the public hearing?
Just for context, because we've had a lot of EDBG, CDBG programs over the years, is this something where they typically just come out with a new program each year, we apply for it, we get money? We've had a really strong track record, so should we anticipate yet another round coming next year and the year after?
Yeah, I would, I would think so. I mean, we, you know, we're considered disadvantaged community, so we, we rank really high, and with the ability to, you know, expand based on everything that Juliana had raised there, we, we, I feel the focus we need is to improve our housing and to help assist in code enforcement. Those are the biggest components that will get the most housing back into production, and, you know, water and sewer, we're doing pretty good on, through the, through other, other avenues, so I don't think that that's really as, as much of a, a need from a capacity from this grant component, because 1.5 million doesn't get you a lot of feet of sewer or water in, in a lot, in any capacity, but it will get us a lot of, lot of action, you know, in a program to help assist housing.
Yeah, the Community Development Block Grant Program actually originates at the federal level under the Housing and Urban Development Department, and so HUD takes a look at nationally what's going on and then dubbies those pots of money out per state, and then within that, HCD goes in and usually sections out certain, certain parts of the California allocation to rural and tribal, larger cities, and they do try to give a little bit to each of them. If you have a very good project, you usually get funding, and they're usually pretty good about if you don't get funding in that round, they're good at refining it for the next round, and so typically, they release the CDBG program every other year, or at least once a year, and it, again, it all depends on economic standing, so again, if we go into a recession, they may not have the program until later in 2024, but they do at least try to have it every other year open for us.
So then, with our Economic Development Planning Grant currently, we're using for downtown revitalization, I think the funding for that is a three-year program?
Yes.
So at some point, there'll be an end product, the plan for downtown revitalization, as well as the assistance for making it happen, we could then use that as the basis of a new program, or would we just continue to fund that program? Or do you create a new one each time?
Yeah, it, it kind of builds off of each other, and that's what I, that's what they're designing it for, is to build off of, you know, it didn't used to work that way, but now they're getting better at designing them to where we can build one program off the next, so like, for example, our Cal OES hazard mitigation person's going to help us get additional grants to help us mitigate the hazards that they determine within our, within our hazard mitigation plan, right?
Yeah.
And so they kind of, they're stacked to where we can build, and this is the same kind of thing, where we're going to take and, we're going to focus on housing, you know, and rehabilitation, but once that's rehabilitated, then we take the next step and like, oh, well, maybe we want to take on a housing project to, to build new housing, you know, I think, but I don't think that's where we need to put our effort, I think we need to focus more on the code enforcement and housing.
Our fire department, now, I, I see you're not jumping to depth right now, and I know it's on your ass, so is this something that we can do next round, or again in the future and apply that to? Once we surpass what you're going after now?
Yeah, I think...
Can we do that around two and, and take care of our fire department?
Yes, and, and that's something that, you know, I mean, we talked about in our budget of going and looking at our facilities, and that's, that's an aspect that I know we need to address.
Yeah.
I'm just not ready to go after it in this component, because we're kind of geared right now towards code enforcement, and I want to make sure we can follow through on all of that and make sure we're fully funded to make sure we can get the...
But this is an option down the road.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cool.
And so depending on the NOPA that comes out, yeah, you can, typically what you would want to do is you use CDBG funding to do the initial planning and assessment, and then you would go for larger pots of money, because a typical fire station now is going to cost you about five to nine million, so even doing a retrofit of this building, which I don't think is the option people want to go for because it's a wooden building and not a concrete slab, and...
Yeah.
And so, yeah, and so again, this program, the maximum award is 1.5 million, a lot of times cities don't go for that full 1.5 million, because again, it is federal funds, and it can tip us into certain auditing and financial requirements, and so, but yes, it is an eligible project, and so when we get to discussion, you can ask that that's added to the list for consideration. So we may, I, I think that's a big thing for the public to understand, is this is to solicit ideas, someone may have a great idea that's better than what we've thought of or could be included, it's just really we have to flush those out for the application of January, so.
Thank you.
Right?
So I, how much did you say we're going after right now?
Well, we can go up to, up to, up to 1.5 million, but I, we were looking at about 3/4 of a million, but now we have to modify the program because originally we were just doing code enforcement, so now the modification, we'll probably go for a higher number.
Okay, and then is there any limit on how many ways this money can be partitioned up between the various things we're asking for?
You could go for multiple programs.
We can go for multiple.
Usually people focus on one, usually maximum two is what I've experienced with, and you may have a different experience. It's a hard application.
Yeah, well, yeah, and the hard part is tying it all back to the, you know, you can easily take one project and tie it to the overall goals of CDBG, but trying to tie multiple projects and intermingle them, you know, what was the, the grant we applied for and didn't get, because it was a little bit commingled, the one we...
Prop 64?
Yeah, the Prop 64 one. So we kind of overmingled, and so we had too many pots we were trying to capture, and I think that actually made our rating lower than actually just doing a straight-up go after one component or two components, and so sometimes it weakens your application, I think.
Do they often...
And then it also puts a burden on Blake and myself and other staff to try and manage the grant and make sure we're allocating the pots correctly, and so it adds administrative burden as well.
Joe, no questions?
Oh, just, is there any danger in asking for the 1.5 million? Could, do they come back, is it typically a yes or no, or could they, in their infinite wisdom at the state, decide to do less? Or we'd have to prove we have a need for that amount of funding?
They're usually yes or no in my experience, but I can't say...
Yeah, I've, I've only ever heard yes or nos, but I think we'd have to have a pretty good justification to go for all 1.5.
That's the idea, focus on one and selling it well, right?
Yeah.
And, and the NOPA itself, as more information comes out on the program, and they limit us depending on what we're asking to do, because I know that was one of the reasons why we were looking to do code enforcement, is that it only had a, you could only ask for 750K to do that, but then the 1, 1.5. So sometimes they want you to go for other projects, and so they'll limit your overall amount to a certain amount if you're going for a certain subset.
Okay.
Again, housing, this...
Yeah, yeah, we could spend 1.5 easily on housing.
Anyway, I'm going to open this up for the public hearing, if you would like to come and propose ideas how to utilize the upcoming community development block grant funding, you can approach the podium, you'll have three minutes to comment.
Hunt White Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. First of all, 90% of what I learn comes out of this room and its body. The average citizen doesn't have an opportunity to learn what's going on. The other 10% I learned, I learned from the people talking to me in the streets, involved citizens, well-meaning citizens. We just okayed a gentleman, Curtis Wright, to help us with code enforcement. That was new to me, I did not learn that until last week. Now, a week later, we talk about enforcement and this block grant. I thank our city manager for going ahead and being proactive with these things, but the fact is, the public doesn't understand this, and they did not follow from last week to this week. I read the staff report, I did not see it was a public hearing, I did not see that today on the internet, I did not know this was a public hearing. It's very important for citizens to have a process in a public hearing, to have statute after that public hearing of what goes on. I don't think the citizens were informed of that, I don't think I was informed of that. To me, I wondered last week how we could afford to go after the small, little houses, all 300 of them, by hiring the currentest right to go after them. I wondered how a small city could afford that. I just revealed to me now that, a week later. I would have liked that information last week, I would have liked it the week before. I think there's more need for public discussion in this. I think this public hearing is a start, I do not like it, the fact that I cannot keep up and follow what's going on with these discussions. I learned a lot in the last five minutes that I had questions of this afternoon, so I'm glad to have got that information, but the fact is, I don't think it's a good idea to go after buildings with no plan what we do with them. Our lawyer did manage to get one project on Sacramento Avenue where the city obtained it, and immediately put that to sale for a price. I would like to some false follow-up like that, because just acquiring code enforcement and acquiring interest...
We're discussing a public hearing for potential projects for the community development grant funding, and I understand your kind of view...
That's what I say, I do not believe as a citizen, I do not believe this grant should go to pay for Curtis Wright because it was not discussed. because it was not discussed.
Members of the council, I'm glad that we are back to the Economic Development Fund cycles. In my time, it was understood that these funds are pretty much automatic. We get these funds because we are poor and rural, but we're supposed to use them to do something. So it's nice to say, gee, what about the House of Glass? Gee, what about the theater? What about the Dunsborough Hotel? But unless you have a proponent, unless you have a plan, unless you have a credible budget, these funds will simply be wasted or they'll be given to another community. So my passion is around veteran housing. We know in the historic district, there are hundreds of units that could be rehabilitated into housing for disabled veterans, for low-income veterans. And that rehabilitation would be paid for by the California Veterans Affairs Department and HCD. They have hundreds of millions in bond funds to address the housing crisis of low-income people and veterans in particular. But if we just forego the vision, forego the planning, forego the grassroots efforts, it will never, ever happen. And that's why I'm pushing for a local group. I mean, Dwight Bailey is not just Dwight Bailey. He's a commissioner on the Planning Commission. And this city routinely ignores the talents of the Planning Commission and what they could do to help make this happen. And I think you ought to think about it. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that'd like to make a comment or propose an idea for CDVG funding? Again, if you are on Zoom, you may go to the reactions tab and raise your hand and you'll have three minutes. Any other men? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and enter us into discussion. So just to summarize the comments, we, for ideas for funding, the veteran housing piece, House of Glass rehab. Did you have one too? I'm sorry, I might have missed it.
Well, I have a party.
Okay.
Just later. So I, I'm-
We, we, so for the purpose of today?
Yeah, I know, I know.
We put it on the list and reported to them, so we'll keep that on the list.
I would like to see some consideration, probably in tandem with the grassroots effort that is currently underway for downtown revitalization. I would like to see maybe some actual dollars to incentivize investment. You know, a lot of these things don't pencil, but they're not that far from penciling. So if we could come up with some program that incentivized, not, not current owners necessarily, unless they wanted to fix it up. But, you know, you get this maybe reimbursement program if it is in fact met, fixed up to certain standards. I feel like that might help us be competitive when people are considering whether to take a risk on downtown Dunsborough or not.
So I just want to clarify something. Since you said that this entire thing is getting moved back, we're having a potential second public discussion later on?
It released pretty, pretty late last week and so it's only a portion of the NOPA. And so we may get other guy, so CDVG is a little complicated in terms of they come out with the NOPA and then as we get closer to opening in January of 2024, they'll issue amendments to that. And so we want to watch that as that goes through because people will then see the NOPA and then they comment on it, ask questions. And so they clarify and refine it as we get closer to that date. So we'll have a better idea of what qualifies for the funding and what would be eligible. And so it would be very appropriate to have another one, just to clarify to everyone and go, this is what's going to meet it and what's not.
Question? When we're talking about code enforcement, are we talking about this money going in part to the company that we hired of lawyers to help us get through these things? Is that part of what we're talking about in terms of code enforcement?
So when, when I talk code enforcement, I talk broadly, any building or anything within the confines of the jurisdiction of the city that is out of compliance, whether it's health and safety codes, fire codes, our municipal code, all of the above.
Historic district?
Yes.
In, in every single district throughout the entire community. And so, so yes.
Is it, is it a part of the investigative process or is it part of the working with lawyers and, and doing all those kinds of things?
It's everything, all of the above.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make clear. It's not just somebody going out and doing it, looking and saying there's something wrong. It also involves the actual solving these problems we have. That's what I wanted to make clear.
Yeah. So to be frank, we have a list, right? And we prioritize in that list based on health and safety and, and then we work through that list. And so as we work through that list, some of these components of that list are substantially more expensive. The purpose of engaging Silver and Wright was to give us a very specified
Skill set.
Skill set within the legal aspects of code enforcement for the state of California to help facilitate the movement of code enforcement on those subject properties.
That's what I want to make sure for the public to understand what you're talking about, yeah.
And so there may be some funding required upfront from the city's standpoint. And as we move through that process, we will bring that forward to the council. But that money is going to be subject to the, the property owner, like they're going to repay it. Whether it's assessed to their property or, or whatever, that it's not on the city, just like the last receivership we did. We don't own that property, to be clear. That's owned by a receivership group. And all of the proceeds of that, when we go to receivership, we're number one on the list to get our money back. Then the receivers are number two, and then everybody else.
And that was the point. I, I suspected that, but I, I hadn't heard that in the conversation tonight. And I think it's really important for people that have been concerned about our abandoned buildings and et cetera to realize this is part of what will help us solve that problem tied together with that firm that we engaged with.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's really, it's, the unfortunate part about property is it's a long cycle, right? You know?
Understand.
And, and it's taken us a long time to get to where we're at. Mark has done an amazing job. He works, he's working with Curtis Wright every single day. What do I need to know and how do I need to follow the process for notifications and, and moving that process through? And so Curtis is, is, is streamlining that process for us because he's the expert. And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move through that and get these properties back into production. And that's, that's the end goal, right? Get it available for, for people to either purchase or live in or, or be a, a commercial space in downtown. So yes, is, is it going to cost us money? Yes. And will this help support that effort? Absolutely. But the one thing about it is the grant will support it to get us through point X. The reimbursement doesn't go back to anybody. It comes back to the city. So if there's a half million dollars put out in legal fees and all of the associated costs for receivership or whatever the process is, that's paid for through that cycle. At some point, the city will get that back and we can use that for other avenues. Maybe even rehabilitation of housing or downtown facilities.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure the folks understood how to collect this all out.
Yeah, no problem.
Did you have another point to add?
Um, talk at this time.
Okay. Anything else? Um, the only other item that we have discussed that can be funded through CDVG is the senior snow removal program. So the cities have not chastened need contractor Great Northern Services through CDVG for that program. Just want to make sure that gets on the list. If we apply or not in this one, um, just to put it out there, Great Northern as a nonprofit can apply where CDVG funds through the city to, to get that service as well, which is typically how it's done for the other two cities. Um, and then if there is an ability to add in projects that retrofit buildings for ADA compliance. I don't know if that's in the NOPA. I have to deep dive into it and see if that's an eligible cost. But that's something I would like to add to the list of eligible projects. So again, just to manage expectations, it's just to collect ideas at this point. And then we flush out which ones are going to meet the NOPA and be the most successful. So some of these may not make it, um, but it, we have to put it on the list to be considered.
This is just general. Obviously, when I read the three benefit low to moderate income households or persons, elimination of slums and blight, or meeting urgent community development need. I mean, those are all three things we need to pursue urgently. But in the meeting urgent community development need with something like sidewalk assistance program, I'm just thinking for, you know, broadly, the future, is this, is this a possible funding source? Because we have property owners who own the sidewalks, but the city who needs to maintain a certain level of standard for our code for the, yeah, and liability. So it's in both the property owner's and the city's best interest to make it as, as feasible as possible. But what's more, it actually provides the concrete service for our residents and visitors. So I don't know if this is a possible source because I know it's going to cost a lot of money to really address that, but-
Yeah, I, you know, 1.5 million dollars sounds like a lot of money for a lot of people. But when you start getting into sidewalks and roadway construction, 1.5 million doesn't get you very far. That's like maybe half of a downtown block.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking if we could coordinate, you know, one block at a time, maybe through this program and subsidize property owners. So maybe it's a half, a matching grant to make it cheaper.
I haven't seen CD, yeah, we can add to this now.
It might fit under, it might fit under the ADA component that we can look at.
Just a thought.
Yeah, the meeting urgent community development need is a really tough sell to CDVG because you, you need them to basically okay the idea before you apply. And it's an added review and granting system. That's why I put quotation, or the parentheses afterwards with prior department approval. That department is HCD, HUD. And so it's not out of the realm of possibilities, but it, it, I haven't seen CDVG used for that because it can be very difficult to do that type of project. Where when you're talking about water and sewer, you're talking about Clean Water Act.
It's urgent.
It's urgent, yeah, because you need potable water and you need to get the poop away from your house because it's a health safety standard. So it can be added to the list and we can ask. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Well, I just had another idea on the beautiful words about water coming to your house and poop flowing away. Could we possibly do a program where we retrofit all the houses in Dunsborough with backflow prevention devices through this sort of program?
I didn't ask, actually.
I mean, I, I know it would save the city and a few key citizens a great deal of pain and liability in the long run.
Based on Commissioner Bailey's recommendation or concerns, I recommend that we make the point of sending out a notice in some form to the citizens before our next public hearing, letting them know about the-
It was publicly noticed in the newspaper.
Oh, okay.
So.
Got it. Thank you.
Right. Any other ideas? All right, we'll close the item and move on in our agenda. Thank you. Move into item number 10A, which is the community promotions funding for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And I will hand it over to the Finance Director, Finance Chair, and fight each other for it.
Michael, it's all yours. No, I'm happy to step in whenever.
So as the council knows, the funding allocations for the Community Promotions Grant was sent back to the Finance Committee with a cap. And that, the last Finance Committee went over everything and had a, what I think is a pretty good allocation of the money. Just to go over, flip notes here for everybody here. The library, Community Resource Center, fairly close to their original ask. Minus a little bit. Chamber of Commerce, $1,000 off. The big cuts were from the Homegrooms and the Siskiyou Arts Museum. The Homegrooms in particular, you know, there was a $10,000 cut there. And the main thing, the reason that that large step happened was 10,000 of their ask was for renovating the bathrooms underneath the baseball field. And while I love all the work they're doing and think that that should be done eventually, in the short term, Parks and Rec is currently in the process of getting grants to put in new ADA compliant bathrooms separate from the field. Mike Rodriguez is hoping for a timeline of roughly two years for that. And then the other issue we had with the bathrooms going in is that those bathrooms underneath the baseball field are about as far away from ADA compliant as you can get. There is, it would be extremely difficult and expensive to retrofit them and remodel them in a way to make them ADA compliant. So really what this would be doing is just kind of restoring them to a basic useful condition for, if it's non-ADA. And we had some serious concerns about the city giving money for a project that is going to work on a city-owned building and not have that be done ADA compliant. That opens up, opens up the city to and Parks and Rec to a potential ADA lawsuit. So that's why that 10,000 was removed there.
Question?
Yes.
Maybe it's me.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I missed something.
Mm-hmm.
We're having these meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas right now, we're not giving Park and Recs nothing because they're not on there.
Theirs was separated out until we were done with the joint meetings.
Yeah. So what we're discussing there, funding at those joint meetings due to the compass-
But we're not kicking them to the curb.
No.
Well, we, we were not kicking them-
They're not, they're not included in this. They were voted out.
But we're not kicking them to the curb.
We're not kicking them to the curb, but they were removed from eligibility from this program. We're, we're dealing with them directly because we have so much overlap, as we discussed at the last meeting when we were together.
Right.
So it's a separate, independent thing now.
I just wanted to be heard that we're not kicking them to the curb.
I could say that I remember at the meeting that we had a, we had a cap that we had in place. And then we took out the amount of money that was planned for the Parks and Recs and set it aside. And that's where the new cap came in. So the new set aside is what we'll be working on as we go working with the Park and Recs to come up with a, a vision that we all share. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, uh, it was a longer conversation about capital and preference. We should take the notice and what's the more appropriate way of doing that. But the council did vote to take it out and until we do the joint meetings, not. So that is not included. So just a really quick question on the homegrown reduction. So is the plan still to open the bathrooms back up? Because I think I, I have-
Bathrooms are on shifting things along the words.
So then we, we should, well, my, my issue is even giving $4,000 so that you can kind of sort of use it?
So the $4,000 for other projects that they asked for, um, you know, one example of that is they, the name Babe Ruth Field is currently not being used by anyone. So they want to research, do some money into that. They want to do some more further add-ons and retrofits to the snack bar. Basically, that extra $4,000, they had $10,000 for the bathroom and $4,000 for other projects. So we removed the bathroom funding and then kept their funding or kept the other assets.
Okay. I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
And I, on that note, I'll make a comment on Siskiyou Arts Museum.
And gentlemen, if you're going to have a sidebar conversation, please leave the council. Mr. Bailey, if you're going to have a conversation, there's a hallway, there's an outside, this is our time, please respect that.
It's our time too.
You can leave. One more time, we will go to recess. We will call the sheriff's office. You do not need to be here. Respect that. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Sure. The entire committee is really supportive of all these, the Finance Committee, community promotion efforts. And in deciding how to best allocate it to achieve the most effect and to some extent, the least harm. We were very conscious of the fact that this program's way outside of its stated timeline. And some organizations have relied on this more heavily than others over the years. As in, you know, without this funding, a major piece of their organization's gone. We're very appreciative of all the work Siskiyou Arts Museum has done without any support from the city. And the thinking was, because part of their ask was to maintain and increase staff, which is very admirable. And part of it was for increasing the capacity of the Second Saturday events, bringing that back. We felt that it was very easy to justify the Second Saturday, but we were hesitant to have any organization rely on us because our funding goes up and down. In some years, it's available kind of on a project-based model. But the more organizations that absolutely need us to keep their staff paid, the more difficult it could come in the very near future. You know, if we get in a tight spot. So, but we're really happy to have them as a new, new applicant and sponsor. And Finance Committee started off by thinking that we should just do haircuts across the board. And we started talking about details more and more and kind of settled on, you know, this can probably do more good overall was the, the concept, but happy to be corrected by full council.
So are there any questions before we go into the follow-up comment? All right, seeing none, we'll open us up to follow-up comment. Anyone who'd like to come and make a comment has three minutes. You can approach the podium. And again, if you are on Zoom, you can go to the reactions tab and we will also work you into the funding or ADA discussion into the funding on the floor.
Peter, I, I just stay in the discussion around the baseball field, which is one of the most historic gifts that Dunsborough possesses. I hope the group that puts together Brew Fest has the bandwidth to recognize that next year will be the 100th anniversary of Babe Ruth visiting the ballpark. I hope these groups will recognize, in my humble opinion, the Father's Day softball tournament was far more successful than Railroad Days this year. It could be a hugely successful event and the hometown boys mostly call themselves that because they graduated from Dunsborough High School. They're hometown boys. They played sports. And what did they do this year? They donated almost $20,000 to sports programs, not city money. Nobody applied to the city to support sports. They did it as hometown boys. So it would be a shame to not have the bathrooms ready. We have less than 12 months to go. It would be a shame not to continue to improve the field and the district has been very spotty about that. It would be a shame not to support the return of youth sports to the city of Dunsborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I echo Peter's comments. I love the baseball field. It's a real asset to our town. I've written several grants for this town. One of them was for, I think it was 15,000 for Wreckin' Park, maybe 20. About 11,000 went to the rejuvenation of the field about a year ago. I think that's a wonderful allocation of that budget. I, I hope that it's maintained. I also think it's wonderful that Mr. Bryan looks at the check register. I look at it online at night before I come here and I look at every item, line by line, and I wonder, is there anyone else there in Dunsborough doing that too? Thank God, there's other people like us looking at that. I used to think that money solved problems. Then I realized, maybe I was wrong. I think that we need to pay close attention to how we're spending the little amount of money this town has, real close attention. And I, I want to thank those that are involved in the system of checks and balances, the democratic system of checks and balances, here to make sure that what we do have is used for the best interests of our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Holt. Just want to say briefly that the allocation that came out of Finance Committee for the library is something I think the library can live with. And as I commented at the Finance Committee hearing, to me, this is about keeping faith with the voters who pass the sales tax increase with the understanding it would help keep our library open. And with the understanding this will definitely help toward passage of any future local tax measures. Thank you.
I just have a very quick clarifying question. Have you made any requests to the Siski County since it is a county library for funding?
We received between $500,000 and $1,000 per year from the county.
Have you, have you requested for more?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I sat in, Madam Mayor, I've sat in on Finance Committee meetings of the Board of Supervisors.
Can you use some mic, please?
I sat in on Finance Committee meetings of the Board of Supervisors and lobbied for it and for the full Board of Supervisors. And as I think you know and the rest of the council knows, it was about nine years ago that the supervisors decided to cut off all funding for the branch libraries in Siski County. So we're coming up, you know, out of that little hole and that's why, you know, we're here now and receiving this very welcome funding from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Ernie Wasson, Siski Arts Museum. So I'd like to say the museum's appreciative of any support from Finance Committee, from the council. And one of the goals of getting Second Saturday to a next level is to increase visitation in town and increase tax base and just revitalize the downtown, which is what a lot of the discussion last night was about. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie, for what you do.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to make a comment regarding the proposed community, or community promotion study? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move back into discussion.
I'd like to start off just by saying that among the amounts here, first of all, I'd like to say I think the Finance Committee did a good job with the numbers. I really like them and support them. I'd like to point out an experience I had last Friday and I was fortunate enough to be able to sit in on a workshop with all of the Family Resource Center employees from around the county. And I think that one of the things that was really special about it was first of all, being around a bunch of people who really do care and the support we give them is very well-recognized. Dunsborough has a reputation of being the star as far as taking care of the resource centers and honoring the people that they serve. But at the same time, I also want to point out that everybody there was just amazed and incredibly supportive of the work that Stephen Bryan has been doing. And so I think that together with the team that he has, the money that we give him, he'll continue to give us good support.
Any other discussion?
I just have a point of order. Since it was discussed as far as the, the use of the funds in part for both the Homegrooms and the Art Museum, if, however this gets allocated, if it gets communicated that it's being allocated for that portion of their application, I think that'll help with any future applications because we'll be asking, how did you use it according to what we allocated? So if we could just somehow fit that into this motion.
Is, is it possible that the grants that Parks and Rec are going for could require a match?
It could, and they, they could ask for.
Bring it back.
They could.
Okay, I think that would be the way to look at it because to me, it's extremely clear that spending money on a, on a site that is not going to be ADA doesn't make sense and, and supporting the effort of the Park and Recs to come up with a suitable solution is, and this could then down the line work, so I'm happy with that.
I was going to just jump in here. One thing, one thing I was thinking, and I haven't talked to an expert, I'd love to talk to say Allison at some point, or you, someone's looked into a lot more grants of this type. I feel like those bathrooms underneath might be a lot more suitable for some kind of historic preservation grant or something along those lines, or historic, you know, grant that focuses on historic.
The Bathroom Museum?
It's just going to be so hard to get those.
Historic urinal.
Babe Ruth.
Yeah, Babe Ruth be here.
I just, yeah, I, I, I think, I, I think my concern when I was clarifying that was that, yeah, I, I don't think we could ever make it a usable bathroom as a community facility under the ADA regulations and that's why I was very concerned. You know, again, it's historic preservation and ADA do not mesh very well and I admit that. But yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I guess, I, I mean.
I, I'd kind of like to comment on Bruce's, the $10,000 component for the restrooms is, you know, I, I didn't bring it forward to the Finance Committee, but you know, in my communications with Mike Rodriguez on a fairly regular basis lately, it was, I think his quote came in at like 302,000, but he only received like 178,000 dollar grant, non-matching. So that's kind of the hindrance. So I would rather take and, you know, when, you know, if that's something that we want to look at in our discussions and those, and, and maybe that's the discussion on how do we, how do we help facilitate that? Because I think the, the ADA restrooms on the ball field side are, are important. I mean, we do have them at the community center and, you know, we have a ton of porta-potties that were just delivered for the weekend, but really a permanent restroom facility is, is definitely the direction we need to go. So I, I think, you know, maybe in our discussions next week, that's if we, I don't think we're bringing that up, but that's something we need to talk about.
And so going back to community promotions.
What I was just going to mention, I spoke with Mike Rodriguez before the Finance Committee meeting because I had heard about the fact that they were going to be putting in those bathrooms. And he said what Dustin just said, one part that was missing is that they're also currently going after other grants for those restrooms to make up the funding difference between the grant they already have and the total quote for the new bathrooms.
And $10,000 isn't going to make up the difference.
Like you said, it's like, well, like 140 or 150.
So yeah, so we can, we'll visit that at a future meeting, so I want to circle this back. I know there's an intent to make a motion.
My motion would be to approve the Finance Committee's recommendation here.
All right, there's a motion to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Chrysler, second by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there any other discussion on the item at hand? I will just chime in really quick. I was the stakeholder for CAP and I do really appreciate that everybody went back through and has been super understanding. I've talked to a couple of the organizations or at least some people in them and they're really happy for, you know, the contributions. And I appreciate the Finance Committee for making hard cuts. It's, it's not fun to do that and so I, I appreciate that for going forward. So we'll move into, we'll call if there's another discussion.
Just wanted to comment that the Finance Committee has received council's direction from a meet, a couple of meetings ago and is going to be looking into how to revamp the program and recommend that. It may be a several meeting process to get into that, but we plan to take it up this fall and be ready by first of the year.
And the idea there is, I understand it, is that we're looking at the two or three organizations that would fit into a different category, the Resource Center, the, and Parks and Recs and the library, is that right?
So that discussion was had with some detail at council. Finance Committee's only discussed that it's a future agenda item for them, so we haven't got any details.
All right, so we'll call the vote. Councilmember Chrysler.
Aye.
And Councilmember.
Aye.
Senator Bryan.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Motion carries.
If I could, one thing struck me here, since we're coming up on the 100-year thing, could you imagine having some extremely large blow-up of the Babe Ruth playing at the plate and having that put on the ball diamond so people can drive by and see Babe Ruth? Wouldn't that be something to make Dunsborough stand out? If somebody has some money to make that happen.
If we could expedite the bathrooms so that they could be done by the 100-year, that'd be something in the U.D.
All right, I'm going to bring this back into our duly-determined agenda. We have future agenda items on here. We'll move into item number 10B, which is the non-union pay resolution, 2023-11.
All right, Mayor and Council, I apologize for not being here last week to help explain this. And so I did add a little component in there. So the, the non-union pay resolution is something that I have done in previous cities and for us to meet the PERS requirements, we have to adopt a pay scale for all positions that we have and it has to be posted on our website. So this was traditionally a part of the union MOU and in the most recent negotiations of the three-year agreement, I felt that there was not an appropriate place for non-union employees to have their wages within that agreement, so I pulled them out. And so based on the comments that I had heard Blake had provided to me, there was, there was some comments about the, the benefits and so we kind of modified that in the resolution to be just equal to the rest of what the staff receives. And then the pay scale itself, we could modify it, say there's a range anywhere between this dollar and this dollar figure, but essentially when I did the modifications and Blake and I went through the double, checked everything, it was, we went from the point of where that employee was on the pay scale forward, not backwards. And so there may be some of these allocations that look a little wonky on the percentage-wise and so there was, so there is some discrepancy if you go backwards. So like, for example, my pay salary is 125,000, which was equal to step six. And so from step six forward, the, the, the cost of living increases is in there appropriately in accordance with what the steps were. And then from there backwards, they are not in the same capacity, if that makes sense. And so if that's something you want me to come back and modify, I can do that, but all of the funds that, of where we're at today of all of the non-union employees are in the current budget and those allocations are appropriate to where they're at on the step scale.
Has the Finance Committee gone over this yet?
No.
As a part of the budget.
So as a part of the budget, yes, and I just want to, I looked into this a little bit as well. This table sitting right here, there was a version of this table in the old union MOU. So this isn't a new creation or anything like that. It's just taking the old table and separating it out of the union MOU since these are non-union employees and there's no reason that they should be.
Or there's nothing substantive changing, it's just a splitting of where the document sits, correct?
Yes, I do believe there was one or two minor modifications, I think especially for the, I think you just kind of touched on those, but the main, the main thing is that this is not a new creation. Not everyone is at one and moving up every year or anything like that. It's just, people are already at multiple steps, as like Dustin just said, he's already at step six. Other employees are already at different levels in here and it's just taking what was in the union MOU and moving it out of the union.
So I, I, some of the confusion around it as far as the percentage increase, I was misunderstanding what it was and couldn't follow.
Right.
Why we got to some of these steps. But I, I guess I just wanted to just clarify a question. It surprised me the city manager was included only because we have a fairly robust mutually agreed upon contract that kind of dictates the terms of employment there. And in my time here, we've always had that sort of contract for city manager.
People always referenced the city manager in the union agreement. I did go back and take a look at that because it is, it is definitely unique to have that there because it's usually, yeah, it's a negotiated term.
Well, and on that note, I guess I'm just saying, is there any, that obviously takes precedence in my mind over anything that would be written here because our contract definitely doesn't cap our current city manager at only one more step, but that's kind of what it shows here, so I don't know.
So you have to report it in this fashion for CalPERS, so that's why you have to.
So this is just a formality, okay?
It's a reporting.
Yeah, and to be, to be clear with the grant we just received and the new position, that would be a non-union position for that CalOES, so I'm going to have to bring it back.
Okay.
So, so if there's any comments that you want me to, if you want me to just put, you know, the bottom number, here's the range, they're from 48, 46 to 6695 and then that can be modified year over year, then I can do that. This is just a one-year.
So did you derive at the increases by taking where the last pay scale left off and starting it at one and just increasing? Could you explain that?
Right, so, so the non-union was 6.1%. So for example, I'm at step six, 6.1%, and then from there forward, I didn't go backwards and modify those.
Oh, those were already.
Those were already there.
So you're just creating the next two years?
Yeah, just whatever, whatever that looks like. And that's not a, it's not a, you know, a finality, but it's, it's something we have to do for requirement because some of the other employees are in various places on the scale.
I guess my only real question is, we review and pass budgets that have pay increases within them and can be asked for, et cetera. I'm a big fan of being transparent and having a pay scale that people can, you know, achieve, but this isn't like something that would ever supplant the budget amount, you know?
No, the, the, these numbers were budgeted before. It was an oversight in the adoption of the union MOU that this component was not in there. And so it should have been adopted on the same day as the budget.
And if CalPERS needs the city manager in there, it could be, but it just seems by nature of having the contract, it's like it's, there's a whole separate document that governs that.
So basically, the contract is the primary superseding agreement and so what we do is we take what is within the contract, divide it into what CalPERS needs us to report and then we, we know.
I'm just not very CalPERS literate, so.
Well, it's.
Trying to understand.
Yeah, it's important for the California pension system because your pension payout is an average of, I believe, the last three years of your employment within the system itself and then they calculate it out. I'm very simplifying this because I don't understand how this works and I'm a CalPERS resident and I will never retire, so it's useless to me. Like, I will die if I retire. Just out of curiosity.
You have 2% of 55 or whatever your, so there's, there's all these different.
And I will never retire, so it's useless to me. Like, I will die. Just out of pure spite for.
You have 2% of 55 or whatever your, so there's, there's all these different multipliers and factors and there's different categories, there's PEPRA, there's classic. So in all this whole scheme, it is, CalPERS takes a, whatever the qualifier is, whether it's three years or one year of your salary, it takes that amount, multiplies it by some factor, which is either your, which is your age, times some benefit factor, 2%, 2.5%. They take three numbers, they took these three numbers together, multiply it, it gets you your unmodified allowance at retire. Now for that, and one of those indicators is a salary, so they want to look at a publicly available salary schedule to say that, yes, indeed, the city, you know, these, these PERS members are earning according to a publicly available schedule.
Okay, well, I think I fully understand it now.
It's more of a transparency reporting document as opposed to, like, this, this doesn't change.
This isn't us reassigning any budget, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I'm happy to, would you do any public comments?
Yeah, we have to do public comment. Are you married to referring to it as non-union agreement?
No, we can call it whatever you want.
Okay.
Do you want to modify it?
I'm just asking if you're like, interested, but, all right, we will open this up for public comment. If you would like to comment on the proposed non-union pay resolution, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes and again, if you're on Zoom, you may raise your hand if you would like.
Hello, Allison Lashewski, 5334 River Avenue, proud union member and steward, 18 years now, Stur's Pension. Knowledge is power. It's really important that all employees have an understanding of the pension system like Blake and I do, so that you can base your decisions based on that knowledge. I really think that there needs to be a level of transparency for all employees. I understand that might not be the city's job and perhaps PERS' job, but giving them access to that would be great. 2% at 55 sounds nice. That's nice. I have 2% at 60, so lucky you. I always think that opportunity for advancement is important, but one of the most important things, I think, when it comes to my experience in a union for almost two decades, is solidarity. And that solidarity with non-union or administration or whatever you want to call it and the union employees, which is why I value things like Me Too clauses that have to do with aligning any increase with non-union employees with that of the union employees. That way, there is similar incentive for these things and there's no divide. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the non-union pay resolution? Seeing none, we'll move back into discussion. I only brought up the name thing because a lot of other places just call it the management unit because you don't, you don't, you're not part of the union, so you don't participate in that.
I like that idea.
And it just kind of.
Well, but some might not be in management capacity, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they are in this case, but I can see the new employee who will be on this.
Well, yeah, and that, and that new employee will be slightly different from both union and non-union because it will be hospital-based.
Yeah, it's a grant.
Okay, yeah, so it'll never even be our actual employee.
They'll most likely be absorbed into the non-union pay resolutions, but again, they're, the five-year payment for that position is written into the grant and so we can't really DBA from that. So if we get someone who wants more money than what the grant allows, can't pay them unless we're okay with giving an additional differential. But anyway, I don't want to get into that position specifically, but going back to this, is there any other discussion on it?
Happy to move it forward. We approve the non-union pay resolution fiscal year 2023-24, resolution number 11.
One second. Right, there's a motion by Councilmember Bryan, seconded by Councilmember Chrysler. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Chrysler.
Aye.
And Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Claire.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And we'll go into item 10C, which is the Public Workshop Relocation Budget Amendment. I'll hand it over to City Staff.
This is essentially, yeah, beautiful. Essentially, this comes from the prior meeting in which you, council graciously authorized to go forward for PACE to do their planning for it, rightly so. You asked for a budget amendment to come back to this meeting, so this is simply amending the budget, which in the staff report specifies that we had $100,000 in our budget line item and we are amend, and currently asking it amended to $175,000 in total. If you remember back, the PACE invoice itself is $156,000. So, so we're just saying, what's, if we're knowing we're going to be spending $156,000, we know we're going to be spending a little more on that, so we're just going to go ahead and say 175 at this point.
All right, what does that take our total deficit to for fiscal year 23-24?
Approximately $75,000 further in deficit.
Like 200 and.
Probably 290?
Yeah, I was gonna say 285.
Close, 289? Because we were at 214, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It could maybe come back as an exact number at some point. So we know when we're discussing, I think it's really important to know to the penny what the deficit is.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open a public comment on this item. If anyone would like to comment on the Public Workshop Relocation Budget Amendment, you may approach the podium for three minutes or raise your hand via Zoom. Seeing none, we will move into discussion.
Could I have just a general sense of your feeling of where we are towards winter? Are we on track? Things looking good?
We're not as close as I would like to be.
Okay, just wanted to kind of get a sense of where we are. Not expecting miracles.
Approximately $300,000 deficit.
All right, any other discussion, questions, comments, motions?
Make a motion to amend budget line item 10-514-8250.01 to $175,000.
Is there a second? Councilmember Claire now, a motion by Councilmember Chrysler, seconded by Councilmember Claire now. Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, if any, we please have a roll call vote. Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Chrysler.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have no new business tonight and we will go into future agenda items. I do have one that I would like to request, does not need to be on the next, but I would like to have a review of the status of our county library with the intent of possibly supporting the county pay for the county library in addition to our contribution, even if it's to match ours. That would be great.
To be fair, I did not sign a new MOU this year, so.
I know.
Yes.
So if we could please have a discussion item on the county library for the future agenda.
I have one.
I appreciate that.
I'd support that. But first, as far as budget amendments go, when this council decided to move to a two-year budget, make that commitment for all sorts of advantages, we were told by Charlie, our auditor, and a number of other people that the way to use the budget then is to use it as guidelines, but you're going to need to update it because otherwise, you know, you could be projecting further and it's wrong. So I don't know whether it's quarterly, that was what we originally intended to do, we've never really lived up to it, or we could go every half year, I'd probably prefer quarterly, but we make a habit of when the staff report says a budgeted item, yes or no, maybe we have some way to explain what the budget effect would be if it's a number. And then just keep that on a spreadsheet and then we'll have a list of budget amendments, at most quarterly, at least half, every half year, so that our public document, the budget, is just, you know, within a quarter or half year of accuracy. If, if, if we could.
It's not really a future agenda item, but a request.
No, but I, I mean, actually, when you said that, I was gonna say, we probably should do it quarterly rather than having to readjust it like immediately after, you know, after the item.
And there's room within this, if budgeted, yes, maybe we could have like negative, positive fund, I don't know. We want to go that far, but a way to keep track of them.
Going back to future agenda item requests, I appreciate that, but we have things to do today. Any other futures?
Time towns are curbing by review.
Thank you. If you, if you, if you have any requests for staff reports that can be made outside of future agenda items, but do you want me to go over the list? We do have, by the way, we do have the historic permission on future agenda items, it just did not make it onto this. I have a spreadsheet where I'm keeping all of them and we're trying to plan out all of the future agendas a little bit better in the future, so it is on future agenda items. Would you like?
So there's, there's another one missing.
Which one?
Cannabis ordinance and I was in favor of holding off till we had more capacity because it's, it's important to a lot of people in the town, but relatively less important than some of the, these things. But I do think it should at least be on the list so we don't, I'll go too many without thinking about it and then remember, oh, we meant to, you know, look at that.
Did you have one though that was just saying?
I just, the chair of contract stations where I.
We are waiting for them to get us the actual contract.
Okay, and then how about the manager's performance evaluation, that'd be the next move?
Yes, the city manager was gracious enough to send me a list of the things that he's accomplished for this year and that he hopes to work on for next year and then I have the evaluation forms for everyone and I'm going to send them out tomorrow morning.
He'll, he'll share that information as well?
Yeah, yep, so you will get his personal evaluation and then you'll get the evaluation forms to fill out, they're the same as previous manager, Coggy Cox's forms and then we will have that for discussion at August 17. I'll send you some instructions in terms of when to get them back.
Oh, I've done it a few times.
Yeah.
Yeah, and those of us that are on the committee probably have it memorized, but if anyone else wants the contract, I think it might be good to review how we set up this process to work in the contract.
All right. Cool. Any other, future agenda items that I did not think of?
I have one from yesterday, so after a discussion with Cosmont, we were discussing on when we would do our public engagement workshop and we're looking at somewhere in mid-October. And so I don't know if that'll be a special meeting, if we'll do it at council or if we'll do it, we'll do it outside of that, so that's still up for discussion, but I wanted to at least put it on the list of something coming up, whether it's at a special meeting for council or whether it's separate from that.
All right.
I make a motion, major.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries, thank you. And I have a special presentation for next meeting, too.
Cool.
I gotta get them some additional information and then they'll, that's the one I think I jammed in.
Ron, tell me, Ron.
The California Civil Rights Department.
All right.